Good afternoon. Welcome to the March 13th Regular Meeting for Forsyth County Board of Commissioners. We are going to begin our meeting today with an invocation from Pastor Mark Key, who's my former pastor several years ago, and he said, "Why am I coming to this meeting tonight? There are so many people here." But he did suggest he might have some very important words, but it's great. Thank you for coming, Pastor Key.
Thank you, Don. Good evening, Commissioners.
If you would, please stand if you can.
Thank you.
Let us bow. God of grace, God of mercy, God of all people, we gather tonight with maybe energy, enthusiasm, anticipation. We thank you for your presence here tonight. We thank you for this good land in which we live, for our county and towns that we come from, and this is a good place, and we're grateful for that. We're grateful for all those who work, our first responders, our school personnel, and all those who figure together to make this a place that we enjoy calling home. We pray for all the events or the decisions that need to be made tonight. We pray for wisdom and knowledge, understanding and discernment for our commissioners. We ask for, we ask your will to be done, God. We pray that your will would be done in all things, and at the end of the night, we will see that maybe we ended up where we're supposed to end up. Pray for grace, for patience, for understanding, and just pray for your presence to be manifest tonight. Lead, guide, and direct us, and be glorified in all that we say and do, in all God's children said.
Amen. Please remain standing for the pledge led by our Vice Chair.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. If there are any citizens that are wishing to participate in the public session portion of the meeting on the phone remotely, please call 336-422-1200. And if you do that, you'll be placed on hold until the public session begins. And of course, the members of the audience who are wishing to participate, you need to fill out a card, and I think we have several of those already done. And if you still want to, have not filled it out, you actually can do that actually right now. The first item on the agenda is a resolution amending Forsyth County zoning ordinance on the zoning petition of Jerry Stoltz and ITAC 484 LLC, formally a motion that we approved in F 1638. Chris Murphy, our planning and services and development services director, is going to give us a brief overview. Thank you.
The overview for this and the second case will be exactly the same. There was a, an error in the ordinance. The public hearing has been held, the commissioners have voted. This is just to make a technical correction to the ordinance in one case. It should have been a partial lot description. I believe that is in case number two. In case number one, there was a partial lot description, but we inadvertently left out the whole pin. So this is just a technical correction to an ordinance. I'll let the county attorney provide any additional information that he would like to, but it's just a technical correction to both of these cases you've previously held public hearings on, voted and recommended, and have approved. This is just technical corrections to those ordinances, so no public hearing is necessary.
Thank you. Any questions for Chris? All righty. Do we have a motion?
So move to the zoning amendment.
Motion by Vice Chair Wisnutt, second please.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Bessie. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously, and as Chris Murphy indicated, the next item is a resolution amending the Forsyth County zoning ordinance of the zoning petition of Perimeter Point Properties LLC, 1648. Same information. Is there a motion?
May the approval of the zoning ordinance amended.
Motion of the amendment. Motion by Vice Chair Wisnutt, the second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Bessie. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. The next item on the agenda is an ordinance ordering the Forsyth County Community and Economic Development Department to remove or demolish a structure unfit for human habitation and otherwise to effectuate the purpose of Forsyth County Minimum Housing Code. Do we have a motion for that?
I may the approval.
Motion by Vice Chair Wisnutt.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Wilson. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, because this is an ordinance that does not have a public hearing component to it, even though the vote was six zero, because there is a member of the board who's not here today, it will need to be voted upon in two weeks for a second reading, at which point a simple majority will be sufficient.
Okay. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is a resolution recognizing March 2025 as Social Worker Appreciation Month, and Denise Price, our deputy county manager, is going to receive the resolution. And please join Commissioner McDaniel at the podium, and you have, and we are ready.
Thank you, Chairman, for allowing me to read the resolution recognizing March 2025 as Social Worker Appreciation Month. Whereas Forsyth County recognizes the importance of giving children in foster care, a safe and a loving space, and ensuring adults are treated with respect, dignity, and proper social structures to retain and, to retain community and social connections. Whereas Social Worker Appreciation Month is a time to honor and recognize the unsung heroes working tirelessly to uplift the lives of vulnerable populations. Whereas social workers are compassionate advocates to change and play a pivotal role in ensuring all the well-being of children, families, and adults. Whereas Forsyth County Health and Human Services, including Bridges to Hope Family's Justice Center, Social Services, Behavioral Health Services, and Public Health is joined by numerous individuals along with the public and private organizations who work diligently to assist the needs of Forsyth County residents. And its social workers also strive every day to improve many lives of the people's quality of life and advocate on their behalf. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Forsyth County Commissioners do hereby, this March 2025, earmark this as Social Worker Appreciation Month for Forsyth County, North Carolina. And the residents of Forsyth County are encouraged to join in uplifting the social workers in the community and celebrating their constant contributions to society, adopted this 13th day of March 2025.
Second that motion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank all of you. And if you would, if you would, come up, just, we need to get at least one quick picture, please, and just remain, that's great, come on up. Next item on the agenda is approval of minutes for the meeting of February 27th, 2025. Do we have a motion?
So move.
Motion by Commissioner Bessie, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner McDaniel. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Madam Clerk, do we have any calls on the line?
Mr. Chairman, we do not have any callers.
Could you tell me how many cards we have for the public session?
We have 18 speaker cards.
Eighteen speaker cards. Just for those members of the audience, we actually allot 30 minutes in our bylaws for this kind of communication. We sometimes go, we can go a little minute or two over. If we, I know you probably prepared for three minutes. If you could be really two and a half, be short, that would be good, and we could get everyone in, but if it goes on too long, we'll have to kind of stop that. But we do have some folks that are downstairs, actually in another room, and what we're going to do is actually, our clerk is going to call out two names, and the first name can come to the podium, but the second, there is one seat over next to the officer, right next to the column over there, and that's a great place for the person on deck to sit. And then when the first person is finished, the second person will be walking up, she'll call out two more names, and we can, we'll get, we'll be moving in that direction. Wait for the two names till after our second speaker, and hopefully we can keep the traffic flow moving and we're not, not spending our time walking back and forth. So with that said, you can go with the first speaker card.
The first two speakers are Cynthia Hurson and Kim Sterman. Please state your name and address for the record when you come to the podium.
Greetings, Mr. Chairman, distinguished board members. My name is Cynthia Hurson, and I reside at 1200 Willie Davis Drive. I stand before you this evening because I believe we live in a nation founded on the simple but powerful idea that government exists to serve the people, not the other way around. And at the heart of that idea, at the core of a strong and functioning democracy are three fundamental principles: accountability, transparency, and the unwavering right of the people to be heard. Now, let's be clear, when we, the taxpayer, and let me say that again, when we, the taxpayer, elect our leaders, we entrust them with a great responsibility. I ain't got that much time, so my purpose and the reason why I am here representing the core, let me take my time, representing the Coalition for Accountability and Transparency. Many of us in this room came here because you all keep making the meeting times be about child time. Again, we elected you all. We need y'all to follow through what we need done. Can't nobody get here at no 2 o'clock. I got two grandkids, one get out at 2:30, the other one get out at 4:00. Check that out. You need to change the time. We asked y'all nicely last year. This time, we telling you all, you guys to change the time, because that's what we elected you all for, for us to be heard, not for you all to keep hearing y'all self-talk. It's not working that way no more. We expect you all to want to hear from us. We expect you all to make decisions in our best interest, not just y'all. Y'all gonna have to stop this for real, for real. Go through this stuff with the city council. I don't expect to go through it with you all again. For real? Let's get it straight. Trust in government is not automatically. It is earned. Y'all disappointing us. Y'all ain't earning our trust. Y'all making us distrust y'all, and that's what's causing the rift and the problems that we're having and what we're seeing. Like I say again, we need y'all to step up, and we need y'all to be for us, about us, and when y'all make decision, y'all must make those decision with us, or otherwise, you all can pack up and leave like we elected you all. We got a right to take y'all out. I'm gonna close for now. Keep it short. Y'all have a good day.
Hello. My name's Kim Sterman, and I'm here speaking on behalf of a large group of concerned animal lovers who are deeply troubled by recent revelations of neglect and abuse at the Forsyth County Animal Shelter, our county's growing number of stray and abandoned pets. We hope that from these incidents, we can bring about real change and that you will call on us to help with the issues of animal overpopulation abandonment and abuse in our county. We are not a small group of people. Forty-five percent of households have dogs, and 32% of households have cats. That's one and a half dogs per household and 1.8 cats per household. Daily, we witness heartbreaking stories of lost, abandoned, and abused animals on social media. We believe we can and must do better. Our primary objective is to significantly reduce the number of animals being abandoned, particularly cats and dogs. We recognize the efforts of animal control and the shelter and other organizations which are doing their utmost to accommodate the animals and their care. However, we understand that these shelters operate on tight budgets and rely heavily on public support. Many volunteers and foster families play an essential role in the effort, but we believe more can be done in our community and county level to help improve the situation, which is getting worse all the time. To that end, we'd like to propose the following solutions for your consideration. Number one, pet license tax. We would like you to bring back the pet license tax and raise the fee to $20 to $25 per animal. This is a standard nationwide price, and give discounts to those that spay and neuter their animals. Licensing breeders. It is crucial to regulate breeders more effectively. We propose requiring all breeders to obtain a license and pay appropriate fees with facility checks for compliance. A more substantial fine should be imposed on first-time offenders, along with a mandate of 25 hours of supervised community service at a shelter. Subsequent violations would incur progressively higher penalties. Our goal is not to penalize pet owners whose animals accidentally breed, but to deter irresponsible breeding practices, especially those associated with puppy mills. We propose that the revenue generated by these taxes be used for spay and neuter and other expenses related to animal service. And on that note, there, on the last page that you guys all have, there is a financial proposal, which I won't be covering. Number three, spay and neutering procedures. Forsyth County could have a giant impact on animal overpopulation through spay and neuter. We propose that the county offer free spay and neuter for the public, and it would actually save money in the end. It's an upfront cost that would end up reducing the county's financial burden for the animal shelter, reduce the need for law enforcement to respond to cruelty, neglect, dog versus people incidents such as dog bites and rabies, of which intact male dogs represent 70 to 75% of the incidents in which law enforcement is involved. And to create a foster program and a positive volunteer program at Forsyth County Animal Shelter. And I'll skip the rest of that, but our county can find successful programs in other counties or states and duplicate their programs. Some counties like Mecklenburg have thriving volunteer and foster programs. In addition to volunteer programs, we could find counties that have great programs for pet licensing fees, licensing breeders, and spay and neuter.
Thank you very much, and thank you for leaving a, I found my attachment.
Yeah, yeah.
For leaving your hand out, which I noticed outlined.
Oh, you're welcome. And I want to say that we are, we welcome working with you and meeting with you further.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, the next three speakers requested that Ms. Sterman speak on their behalf, so we're going to go through those three and go to the next ones. Marcy West and Fred Lewis, please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, Commissioners. Marcy West, 331 Carolina Circle. I'm here today representing Camel City United Indivisible, an organization of over 800 people, to talk about evening meetings. I've been here before. Before I do that, I would actually like to ask that the people in this room and also in the overflow room, over 50 people, stand up if you are here, if you are also here about evening meetings. Please stand up. Okay? So you can see that there's a number of people here. There's another whole room we can't see. My husband estimated 50 people a while ago. I don't know. So good evening and thank you, Commissioners, for this rare evening meeting. We appreciate it. People do care about evening meetings, and it is critical to allow the community to participate in public sessions, and they're a local government best practice virtually everywhere. I would like to address reasons that have been put forth for why we can't have evening meetings. Okay? I've heard these myself. No one will attend. Well, this has not been the case in the past two years. There have been two evening meetings that were forced by the public that were budget-related, and they resulted in overflow meetings. Now, everyone won't be like that, but I can tell you, when there are reasons for people to be at meetings, they will attend. Staff have to work too hard. Well, the city council and the school board meet at night, as well as 93% of North Carolinian counties, 93%, okay? And those are the largest ones. It's, it's not like this is a hardship. This is something that's normal. Number four, meetings live streamed, so residents can just watch online. Well, that is true. People can watch online, but we know that it's important to be in the room watching while those decisions are made. You can't just watch that. You can't see who's watching, who's online. You don't know the numbers. You have no idea. So there could be people that are, want to be there and want to be able to see it. Residents can call in. Well, the reality is that if people cannot come to this meeting, they probably also cannot call in. 2 o'clock on Thursday is a busy time. If you're in business, frequently, that's a meeting time, a recurring meeting time, and you can't come. There are school pickups, there are jobs where people cannot get away. So I've also heard that Commissioners prefer emails, and since they won't learn anything from people who talk in front of them for three minutes. However, when you get emails, the public does not see those emails. They don't know how many of them you've gotten. They don't know what the positions are on those emails. So it's a very one-way thing. The other thing is, those emails may not be responded to. I know that because personally, I've sent emails that haven't gotten response to. So I have been, if you could just let me finish, please, sir.
Quickly.
I've been in public meetings where clear concise statements can change minds, and if people have open minds, they can. I've also witnessed several incidents here in this room where the people in the audience have changed votes of Commissioners because they've been looking at people. It is much harder to ignore people standing in front of you than 10 emails in your inbox. Public meetings are meant for the public. It's not just for the Commissioners. It's a two-way street, and they need to be available to all. Thank you.
My name is Fred Lewis. I live in Ardmore, Winston-Salem. I'm relatively new to Winston-Salem, about a year and a half, but for 40 years, I practiced administrative law in Texas. Administrative law deals a lot with how government works, and I also worked pro bono, for free, in improving governmental processes, ethics, accountability, and transparency, both at the local and state in Texas since 2001. I wanted to say that, make one point, you are required by, two points, by state law to have a public comment period and certain public hearings like zoning. You do the absolute minimum required by law, which is an outline. You do the absolute minimum required by law, which is an outlier. The other urban counties, the other local governments, they do much more than the absolute minimum. And while that might be legal, it doesn't really meet the spirit of the law. And what I mean by that is if you're going to have the minimum public hearings when you know most people can't attend, you've essentially made that right, the legislature gave people, hollow. Because you know most people are not coming. So let's be clear, who's not coming, who you're not hearing from. You're not hearing from teachers. I think they know something about the public schools. You're not hearing from the parents, the PTA. You're not hearing from homeowners about their neighborhoods and their property rights. And frankly, they're working so they can pay the mortgage and the taxes. So they have a right to be heard on their neighborhood and homes. And the community groups that pay the taxes and need the services have a right to give you their feedback about the quality of those services and how they might want them changed. So public hearings are an important part, they're required by law, and frankly, y'all are outliers. You are not doing what the rest of the state does. And one last thing, the notion that TV, watching TV is like doing it live reminds me of saying watching a trial on TV is the same as being at the courtroom. That is not true. It's a much different, you get a much better feel for all the participants and what their values are and how attentive they are. And we would urge you to have regular evening meetings. Thank you.
The next two speakers are Matt Sin and Rosalyn Sloan. Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Matt Sin. My address is 631 Frightuck Road. Now, many people, my fellow citizens, have heard me speak before and many people haven't. So I'll remind everybody that we gave the pledge of allegiance, One Nation Under God. We had an invocation by Pastor. Whether you believe in him or not, Jesus Christ all gave us, gave us all a responsibility to treat the least of us as if they were Jesus himself. He also said, "It's easier for a camel to walk through the eye of a needle than a rich man to enter the kingdom of heaven." Something to remember while right now, unelected rich and elites are cutting funds for the least of us, including the Department of Education, which goes right along with the Project 2025 playbook, which I've been warning people about. Now, in order to have, in order to have the society we all want and educated children to solve the problems of tomorrow, we must do difficult things. Now, we're in the middle of March. What is March known for? It's March Madness. Millions of people are spending billions of dollars on illegal gambling pools. They're spending money on watching TV while they're at work, while children are going hungry, not getting one nutritious meal a day. Teachers and first responders cannot afford to live in the counties that they work in because affordable, the definition of affordable housing is a thousand dollars, which is way too high. Now, come on, okay? I've said this before, what can we do? We can hold the people that we have sent to Washington and Raleigh accountable. That is what we need to do. We need to make sure our voices are heard each and every day. And they need to know that if they don't do what they're supposed to, to protect the least of us to, just for tax cuts for the rich and elites, well, guess what? In North Carolina, what do we do? We stick tar on our heels and we don't back down. Thank you.
Hello, Rosalyn Sloan, 4110 Winchester Road.
Hi, my name is Mary Ellen Sloan. I am six and I'm in first grade and I go to Spies Elementary School. Burning the methane gas from the pipeline causes pollution, I have a friend that has asthma and I, it could make her sick and other people that have asthma.
Hi, my name is Elizabeth. I'm nine years old and I'm in third grade at Spies Global Elementary. If there was an emergency with the pipeline, the people next to the pipeline would only have thirty seconds to evacuate, seven tenths of a mile. We also need to know if it would be safe to put in next to other pipelines.
Okay, I'm mom, but also registered nurse, foster parent, so I know a little about advocating for children, especially children who are vulnerable and vulnerable to adverse health effects like they referenced. So we're concerned about the safety and the health risks of the Southeast Supply Enhancement Pipeline that's proposed to run through our county, particularly in the Carner'sville side. It has not, the safety and health risks have not been adequately addressed by the Williams Company, which is the company that is going to do this Transco SSEP pipeline, or by the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission. The Williams Company's safety record in particular is worse than other gas transmission operators in fatalities, cost per incident and gas spills per incident. And most of Williams' incidents are considered direct, meaning that they could have been prevented if they, if the company had taken the proper precautions. In other words, they're doing the bare minimum. They have a bad record. So we have a lot of questions, but some of the most pressing are, if there is a pipeline failure, how will it affect the surrounding community, our communities? What if the two other co-located pipelines that it's going to be built right next to are affected by an explosion and we find ourselves in a situation that's not accounted for by the safety studies? Because the safety studies only have to study what happens if one pipeline is affected, but this is three in very close proximity. Who would cover the costs of emergency services, cleanup, repairs, and God forbid, funerals and accidental death payouts if there was an accident? Would these costs be passed on to us through our utility bills, as was the case with, for example, the coal ash cleanup? And how would a failure impact Carner'sville's emergency response services at a time when our emergency response services are often already overtaxed? And then a basic question, why are we considering allowing this when Duke hasn't even shown us an assessment indicating how much more power will be needed in the upcoming years? Thank you for your time. Apologies in consideration of passing a resolution to hold Williams accountable for the implications of the project.
The next two speakers are Jenny Easter and Stephen McCormack. Please state your name and address for the record.
Jenny Easter, 5120 Paramount Road, Pofftown, North Carolina, 27040. Good evening. I come to you tonight as the President of the Forsyth County Association of Educators, our public school staff union. This has been a longstanding request, not going to say too much, anything too different than what has already been said, but just to remind you that even though this is the first evening meeting, that it also coincidentally lands during our spring break, when many folks are out of town and not available. You can obviously see that it is still important to your constituents. So we have showed up en masse to ask you to reconsider or amend the resolution that you have put forth tonight for approving your quarterly meetings in the evening to actually changing it to have an evening meeting once a month so that your community members can understand and be actively involved in the democracy and the decisions that you make for us every time you meet and discuss, whether it's budget, whether it's opening a park, whether it's, you know, building facilities that our people need in Forsyth. Like, we need to be here to hear it. Like, I didn't even know, I love, you know, that we have a place for our strays to go to, but like, just knowing that we have people that are advocating for them to be treated well and that we need more money to go towards taking care of them because there's so many of them. And so, like, even just being here and like, having folks that aren't here to ask you to move your meeting, to speak on their heart or something that's important in this county is very educational for folks that are just sitting in the audience, not planning to speak at all. So I hope that you will consider that and approve it tonight. Thank you.
Hey, good evening. My name is Stephen McCormack. Most people know me by Mac. I've lived in Forsyth County for over thirty years. I live at 3527 Burnley Drive in Clemens. In full disclosure, I'm representing the buyer for the group interested in buying the county's land out at Chatelone and University Parkway. My job is to recruit new companies to come to Forsyth County, bring new ideas, new concepts, and that's what my client has. And I'm always looking for ways to make Forsyth County better. And I will say, I'm a former soccer coach down at the Sarah Lee Soccer Fields and we would certainly provide a nice quality service for those families from out of town that can go places to buy Gatorade and snacks in between the games and so on and so forth. But thank you for listening and I appreciate it.
The next two speakers are Carolyn Highsmith and Trevonia Brown Gaither. Please state your name and address for the record.
I'm Carolyn Highsmith and live at 3335 Anderson Drive, Winston-Salem NC. And I am representing the Winston-Salem Neighborhood Alliance, a coalition of community neighborhoods and their advocates working to ensure that the integrity and character of our city and county neighborhoods are maintained and preserved. The Winston-Salem Neighborhood Alliance strongly supports the change to at least monthly six o'clock PM Commissioner meetings for maximum public participation, but preferably for all Commissioner public meetings should start at six o'clock PM. The change several years ago to a two o'clock meeting time has created a barrier for public participation where there has been very little to no public attendance on important county government issues at county Commissioner meetings, creating a lack of accountability and transparency to the citizenry of this county. County Commissioners are elected by the voters of this county to represent the citizens of this county and as such, should be promoting and encouraging county residents' attendance at all county Commissioner meetings. Please change to a six o'clock PM evening meeting time for county Commissioner meetings. Thank you.
My name is Trevonia Brown Gaither and I reside at 1031 Rich Avenue here in Winston-Salem. I have been a lifelong resident of Forsyth County, specifically Winston-Salem. Chair Martin, members of the county Commissioners, I want to thank you for your service and for this opportunity to express my concerns. I am here to address the meeting times of Forsyth County, and I want to say North Carolina because if we just put Forsyth County in the internet, it'll go to Georgia automatically. Being an elected official, I think it is our responsibility and important that we hear from all of our constituents, regardless of their economic status, their employment status, race or sexual preference. We are elected to serve and represent everyone that lives in Forsyth County. By having meetings scheduled in the early afternoons, it prevents those working constituents. As a member of the Winston-Salem Forsyth County Board of Education, our meetings are held at six thirty in the evenings, providing an opportunity for all concerned to attend. I urge you, the county Commissioners, each of you, to amend your meeting times to six PM for the benefit of all community members of Forsyth County of North Carolina. Thank you.
The next two speakers are Jessica Rowe and John Calhoun. Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Jessica Rowe and I live at 1206 Wedgewood Drive. I will say that the reason that I can come and give this public comment about the pipeline is because this meeting is at six PM, so I appreciate you holding it at six PM. I am here to raise a real, what I would say, red flag about the methane gas pipeline that is proposed coming into our county. I understand that the Commission has already discussed this proposed pipeline and decided not to put forth a resolution about the project. I truly understand that that's happened, but I am here tonight to please ask each of you to reconsider this decision. A resolution of concern or a resolution of asking more questions would help raise awareness that there are residents and Commissioners here that have questions about this project coming to our county, as we've heard about some of the safety issues that are, yeah, creating red flags for us. Transco is a giant gas company responsible for transporting one-third of the gas used in the United States, but they have a really bad track record in both safety and in economic development in our, in the areas that they go to. The Southeast Supply Enhancement Project would seek to transport an additional 1.6 billion cubic feet of methane gas per day through a forty-two inch diameter pipeline. But more than ninety percent of that gas will go to three large companies that will use that to power data centers that are not in our communities. So it's really just being transported through our county and we're inheriting a lot of risk in the process. So myself and hundreds of other county residents have safety concerns, we have public health concerns, but we also have property rights concerns and environmental concerns related to this project. So again, I would just please ask the Board to reconsider putting forth a resolution. Silence is like basically giving a rubber stamp to say that we're okay with this coming to our county. But a resolution of concern or a resolution asking more questions would speak loudly to regulators, both safety and environmental regulators, that more work needs to be done by this company before we can allow them to come and risk our safety and our health. Thank you.
I'm John Calhoun. I live at 1416 Brookstown Avenue here in Winston-Salem. I'd like to comment about the proposed Transco Pipeline. A pipeline project this large raises, I think, some important issues and questions for our county and region. Of course, we have to think about who will pay for the pipeline. As generally is the case, ratepayers end up paying for infrastructure. The proposed methane gas infrastructure that has been proposed for North Carolina, as is, there's even a bill in the North Carolina Legislature that would require, that would require ratepayers to pay for the project upfront while it's being constructed. Another concern has to do with the easements. The pipeline being forty-two inches, it'd run alongside three existing pipelines. And my understanding is that landowners, in addition to their existing easement, would then have a new easement of twenty-five feet or more. And so the question would be, will they be paying taxes on twice the easements without being able to do anything with the land other than plant road crops or grass? Of course, where trees are removed, for instance, the, the pipeline will, will run for three-quarters of a mile under Triad Park. And there and in other places, if trees are removed, trees could not be planted in the easement in perpetuity. could not be planted in the easement in perpetuity. Often missing from the industry's description about their plans, their marketing, is the acknowledgement of the damaging effects of methane gas emissions, which occur from the drilling platform to the, all along throughout the delivery process. And we know that methane is up to eighty times more potent a greenhouse gas compared to carbon dioxide, and responsible for a third of global warming. Last year, the EPA was concerned enough to want to restrict and limit methane emissions, even as satellite data shows that their estimates were several times too low of the actual methane emissions that are occurring. So this is a real concern. Methane gas doesn't appear to be a clean energy source. In other parts of the country, several pipelines have been examined closely and on close scrutiny. It appears that there was not a need for it, and they were abandoned, especially after the public objected. So, in closing, I would say that we don't need to join the rush to pay for more expensive methane infrastructure when safer, less financially risky, less financially risky and physically risky, and cleaner alternatives exist. Unfortunately, if the public and governing bodies are silent on the project, it would likely mean giving consent. Please consider taking an active role in requesting that this pipeline project be halted so that we can explore safer, less risky alternatives. Thank you.
The next two speakers are Matthew Scoggins and Kwame Kia Shavers. Please state your name and address for the record.
I'm Matthew Scoggins. I reside at thirteen-fifteen Creekshire Way in Winston-Salem. Commissioners, I know your eyes are probably glazing over at all this, getting bombarded back-to-back, but again, I want to mention that the, that the, let's speak out against the pipeline. That's the main thing that brought me here. Everybody before me kind of mentioned the specifics. Again, you know, that forty-two-inch diameter pipe, that is not an insignificant danger, and, you know, the tens of millions of, you know, gallons of gas going through it every But I think something also important to mention is the cost of our collective future and the climate impact it's going to have on all of us. What is posterity going to say about our continual funding of natural gas projects? We're looking at the future. It was hot today. It's March. It's ridiculous. I think the young people today are going to inherit a mess, and I want to denounce any expansion to any fossil fuel projects in our county. It's a matter of what we owe ourselves and posterity and how they will look at us as we bend the knee to large corporations. The pipeline includes compressor stations, compressor station expansions that emit volatile organic compounds that are known to increase people's, things like eczema and asthma all over the county. Also, the damages to our lungs and the environment are so unnecessary and vile. This is just a very unnecessary project. On another note, you know, this is a local issue now, but it has global impacts, and the fight for continued environmental protection and hopefully restoring and preventing further damage is going to be fought here at the local level. I want us to consider that, you know? We let little things go here and there because it's easier, but I think we really do need to speak out. On a completely different note and taking an international look at things, I was a history major, and what I see frightens me. I know it's unpopular, but while I have the mic, I feel it unnecessary to address the state of things in Gaza and the West Bank. We should, as a country, divest from many companies, I mean, as a county, but also as a country, and it supports, and we're, there are all support from states that commit war crimes. I don't think that should be controversial. October seventh was horrible, and, you know, we want to make sure we, of course, fight against terrorism and things like that, but children shouldn't answer for the crimes that their parents. On the last note, I work nights and weekends. I also work for the public. Y'all should too. It's not that, I know it's not fun, but, you know, you're here to face us all. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Good evening, commissioners, county manager, and additional staff. My name is Kwame Kia Shavers. I am at thirty-eight fifty Heatherview Lane, and I am the founder of the Pink Vote, sponsored by Carolina Ford. Our organization is dedicated to increasing voter participation within the black and brown communities. Through conversations with community members and grassroots organizations, we have identified that scheduling the county commissioner meetings at two PM hinders constituents' ability to participate and stay informed. In contrast, school board and city council meetings are held in the evenings, providing citizens with the greater opportunity to engage and participate. So, now that we got that part out the way, I want to say this. I've participated in these meetings, and for the most part, they're pretty boring, okay? But when they're not boring, they're great. When you have those hot topics, those times that we really need to be in and advocate for the things that we care about, even if it's indifference with you, that we need to be able to be in position to do that and to be in a greater position to do that is in the evening and not at two PM for all of the vast reasons that my previous colleagues stood up here and have already told you. Another thing that I would like to say is that I won't stand before you and say, "Do this," or "You're out." I am the owner of Shavers Political Consulting. I have managed five campaigns. They have all been successful, so I think I have the recipe of replacing someone if they need to move. But let's work together, because the districts... The districts are drawn how they're drawn, so they're going to be a set of Republicans and they're going to be a set of Democrats, so let's work together. Let's work together to bring our community in here, because when I do come in here and there are hot topics on the table, I learn so much. I give my funny little commentary. I learn so much from you guys, your facial expressions. I can tell when you're not feeling something, or when you're excited about something, when you already have your mind made up. And I just want other constituents to come in here and be a part of this, because it really is fun. I believe it's fun. I love politics. And I just want other community members like myself who hadn't had a long history in politics but love it now that I'm in it, and we would really appreciate if you consider that six PM meeting timeframe, so you can see the smiling faces that elect you before they stop. Thank you so much.
The last speaker is Deborah Dinsky. Please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
Deborah Dinsky, seventeen-twenty-two Princeton Street, Winston-Salem. So I'm here tonight, and thank you all for having us here and for listening to us. I'm here tonight about the Transco Pipeline. I am the chair of our local foothills Sierra Club Group, and when our North Carolina chapter announced that they are going to start talking a lot about this pipeline, and they're not too excited about the prospect of this pipeline that's going to go through many counties in North Carolina, I started educating myself on it quite a bit, and we've had a few community meetings about it. And I started asking myself, well, there's got to be a positive somewhere, right? I mean, how will this benefit my area, my county, my city? And I'll tell you something, I cannot come up with one single thing that is going to happen with this pipeline that is going to benefit us. It's not going to make our energy bills any less. Nobody's. It's going to encroach upon people's rights to their own property. It's not going to enrich our county in any way, and it's going to put us in a lot of danger if any kind of catastrophe happens. So, I'm not really for it, and I'm hoping that you guys, our commission, well, commissioners, will reconsider the stand not to have an opinion on it. It's going to affect your constituents. You've got to have an opinion on it. Please. Thank you very much, and I too support six PM meetings. Thanks.
Well, thank you for all of your comments. I made a few notes, and we will continue with our agenda. Our Madam County Manager, floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good afternoon, Commissioner, staff, and guests. The agenda items before you have been briefed and hopefully questions answered. Agenda item number seven is a resolution authorizing execution of an interlocal agreement between Forsyth County and the Town of Rural Hall for the production and sale of street name signs. This would allow us to continue our arrangement with the Town of Rural Hall through June 2028.
Do we have a motion?
Approved.
Motion approved by Commissioner Bessie. Sir, second.
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Wizenhut. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Agenda item number eight is a resolution authorizing execution of an amendment with Nilam Labs LLC due in business as Arc Point Labs of Winston-Salem for the provision of comprehensive drug screening as court-ordered or requested by Family and Children's Division of the Department of Social Services in an amount not to exceed sixty-two thousand dollars through June 2025.
Do we have a motion?
I move to approve.
Motion approved by Commissioner McDaniel.
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Wizenhut. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Agenda item number nine is a resolution accepting the highest offer to purchase county-owned real property by negotiated offer advertisement and upset bids procedure, a 3.5 acre portion of 5580 Sturmer Park Circle. Per the board's direction, county staff put this property up for sale. This resolution authorizes the sale to VNC Land Company LLC, who offered $3 million to purchase the property. The offer was advertised for upset bids, and no additional bids were received. The developer, Jeffrey Deeds, is here, and he will provide an update on how they plan to utilize the property.
Good evening, commissioners. Jeff Deeds with Visconti Companies, three-zero-zero-five-zero, Chagrin Boulevard, Pepper Pike, Ohio. Good evening, commissioners, and good evening, County Manager Robinson. Hope I said that, addressed you the correct way. Thanks for allowing me to speak this evening, and thanks for, Kirby Robinson, for shepherding us through this sale process. As you're seeing the contract, it's noted as VNC Land Company. That's simply Visconti North Carolina Land Company. That's how we prefer to do business down here in North Carolina. A little bit about Visconti Companies, and I think it's good to note, so Visconti Companies is a hundred-year-old, fourth-generation real estate company. It's run by two brothers, Anthony and Dominic Visconti Jr. Our tenant for the property is Dash Inn, which is owned by the Wills Group. The Wills Group, very similar to Visconti Companies, they're also run by two brothers, Joe and Julian Wills. They are also a fourth-generation family-owned company, however, they're only ninety-eight years old, not a hundred years old. What I admire about both companies is their high ethical standards, which makes it easy for me to come here and be transparent with all of you. It makes my job easier, and it makes it easier for me to actually to sleep at night. To talk a little bit more about the Wills Group, and the Wills Group is the, is the parent company of Dash Inn. I think you all have a handout that we gave you for the Dash Inn store. So, the Wills Group owns and operates about three-hundred-and-fifty convenience stores and car washes, primarily in Delaware, Maryland, and Virginia. And they didn't grow like most, they didn't grow, I'll say, ground-up like most convenience stores do. They actually grew through acquisition. They would buy older gas stations, and when I say that, I think most of you will remember, you know, the old corner gas station where you had two fuel pumps, two service bays, two vending machines, one bathroom, that you had to find the attendant to get the one greasy key that he had for the bathroom that we all shared together. And what the Wills Group would do is they would buy those smaller gas stations, and they would convert them. They would make the service bays a convenience store. They would make the, they would upgrade the stores, make them profitable, and that's how they've run their stores really for the last nearly a hundred years, and they've been very good at it. That's what they consider their, I guess, their legacy stores. But in more recent years, there's been kind of two problems with that. One is those smaller stores are harder and harder to come by because they're just non-existent for them to buy an old gas station. And secondly, and probably more important, is that the landscape for convenience stores has changed. Convenience stores now are much larger, you know, five to seven thousand square feet, offering more goods. They have electrical, you know, electric vehicle chargers, because everyone wants that also, you know, more amenities, gourmet coffees, and, thank goodness, larger bathrooms. I think we can all agree that that's a good thing. So what the Wills Group has done now over the past five to seven years is they have looked at their stores and said, "What are our best practices?" And then they've gone out and surveyed their customers and said, "Okay, what does the customer want?" And they took the past five, six, seven years, and they've developed this Dash Inn store, which I'm going to show you a video here in a few minutes. They've developed a Dash Inn store that's, it's really higher-end, it's impeccably clean, it's open, airy, it's friendly. They have a greeter at every store when they bring them in. They have a variety of food choices, and I think you have the menu there, and also some really good food choices. Now, we also can pick bad choices too, that's up to us, but they offer some very healthy food choices. They've got a variety of seating areas. You can come in and sit down inside, you can go and sit on the patio outside. It's just a very good, friendly environment, and they've, they've really framed this around the customer, so it's a really customer-friendly environment. The other thing about the Wills Group is they're, you know, they're big advocates of giving back to the community. I don't know if you've probably heard that before from other companies, but they are very, they're big advocates on giving back, as is Visconti Companies, by the way, and they really do believe in giving back to the communities in which they serve. I did listen to the videos from Monday, as well as back from January. There was two kind of items that came up. One was traffic, and the other one was, how would this development, how would this development mesh with the other five to six acres that would be, that would be left over? First, to talk about the traffic for a minute, we will have to go and prepare a traffic study and meet with NCDOT regarding our curb cuts. They'll tell us where we can have our curb cuts, how big they can be, whether or not we have to have deceleration lanes, things like that. We haven't prepared the traffic study yet. We're a little bit early in the process, but we will have to do that at some point in time. And the good thing about convenience stores is they're not destination locations, so convenience stores really capture the traffic that's already on the street, so there's not a lot of new trip ends, trip ends created from a convenience store. So that's, so that's a good thing from that perspective. And then the other part on how does this mesh with, you know, with the land that's left over, I know you voted to study for a potential park there, but whatever the county wants to do with it, in my previous professional life, my first professional life, I guess I could say, I was actually a landscape architect. And we'll do whatever we need to do with the county, whether it's landscape plantings, fencing, sidewalks, lighting, picnic tables, whatever we need to do to make this a cohesive development. development, we're willing to sit down with you folks and do that. We want to be a friend of the community, a friend to the county, and that's how we get, how we believe in getting those things done. With that said, that said, we've got just a quick, one-minute video. It talks all about Dash Inn, a lot of it's in what we passed out. Let me make sure I can do this correctly. I'm not always real good with the technology, but I do want to say, thank you for your vote back in January to get us to this point. I'm going to show the video, and then if there's any other questions, I'd be more than happy to address those at that time. Thank you. I hear the rumbling back there. Sorry, I didn't bring any samples with me. I guess I could have probably made everyone hungry from the weight here, but this was the first store that they, of the Dash Inn prototype that they built in Chantilly, Maryland, and this is very similar to what they would look to do here. As you can see, it's, it's bright, airy, a lot of choices, nice and open, friendly. And with that, I'd open it up for any questions you might have for me. Thank you very much.
Any questions that Commissioners may have?
I don't have any questions, sir, but I do want to let you know that I was one of the Commissioners that had reservations, and I wasn't quite sold on this, but we need your dollars. So I will tell you, and I appreciate you saying that you're going to be good neighbors in the community, you're moving into my district, and you're moving into my neighborhood, so it was important to me to get all the facts, and my message to you today would be, be good partners to the community because they will come. You see, there's coalitions and organizations in this room today. We will come to you, and we would love to have your support. So that you know, this meeting is being recorded, and I'm going to hold you to your word. Thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments?
Just a couple of comments. I have no doubt that this is a well-managed convenience store chain. The, the two things that I would add in terms of comments, I received this morning an email from Mr. Deeds that he, I believe he sent last evening, offering to meet to discuss accommodations that could be made to blend with a park use, if that's what the county elects to do with the remainder. I'm sorry that I did not have time to meet with you today, but I would, if we were to postpone a vote on this to the next regular meeting, I would make it a point to sit down and talk with Mr. Deeds about that. In addition, I note that Commissioner Linville was unable to be here this evening, and he has been particularly interested in this property, and I would like to see him have an opportunity to make any final comments. I would suggest postponing the decision on the matter to our next regular meeting and leave that to my colleagues, whether you're interested in doing that.
Let me make one comment, and I'll see if there's anybody interested in that. Just thinking, kind of looking at you, we're usually on a different end of these kinds of issues. This is, we're usually on the side of a zoning request to make a change. This is the case where we're on the side of the property owner actually selling it. And there's about, I looked at the contract, it's about a year's worth of, there's due diligence, it takes about nine months, and then there's a period of permitting times and there are extensions available, et cetera. And, and the real decision on the, on the zoning side of that, which gets at traffic studies and all of those kind of things, is going to rest with the city council and not with us, because it's in the city. So this is, there's kind of, there are other hoops to jump through in this process. This is for us, you know, do we want to sell the property for $3 million? And I probably feel like, and I'm good with that, that part, and I probably don't need to wait anymore, but I'd be happy to, you know, to entertain a motion to delay, or if there are other people that like to comment on that.
With all due respect, I would like to delay until Commissioner Linville returns.
Well, we'll accept that as a motion from Commissioner McDaniel. We'll second by Commissioner Bessie to delay for two weeks, for the two-week period. Other discussion about that?
Could I ask, Kirby, does this interfere in any way with the sale of the property? Is there a time issue?
Commissioner, I appreciate the question, and County Attorney is certainly welcome to jump in. Right now, the Board has 5% of the offer, so you are holding $150,000 from the potential buyer. I think it's at your pleasure and how you move through that process, but no, ma'am, we're not under contract yet.
Would it hinder you in your decision?
No, that's fine. I mean, we could wait two more weeks. I'm, I'm fine with that.
Well, I think it's a little unusual to, to delay something for one Commissioner to have a conversation, but if we will not delay this process, the last thing I want to do is lose $3 million, so that Mr. Bessie can have a conversation.
Any other converse, any other questions? Any other discussion? We'll vote on that motion. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Good. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We'll consider it in two weeks. And thank you for your presentation and the handout.
Thank you very much.
All right, good.
Agenda item number 10 is a resolution accepting real property located at 2050 Big House Gaines Boulevard from Family Services, Inc. In 1992, Forsyth County conveyed this property to Family Services with the stipulation that the property would be used for nonprofit public uses. The deed included a provision by which the property would revert back to Forsyth County if not used for the purposes identified in the deed. Family Services vacated the property in January 2024 and notified the county in August 2024 that they wish to activate the revision, the reversion provision. As shown last week, the property was reverted in very poor condition, and staff's plan is to try to sell the property.
Do we have a motion?
Approved.
Motion approved by Commissioner Bessie. Is there a second? I'd be happy to second that. How about any discussion that we may have on accepting the former Skyland School property?
I was disappointed today to learn that Family Services did not have any insurance on the building. I hope in the future, maybe we can, when we have these types of obligations, that we can make sure that they have insurance to cover fires. Thank you.
Any other discussion?
Yes, thank you. Chair Martin, I do want to obviously support the reception of this property, but also remind the Commissioners of our briefing on Monday about the possibility of this property being used for, obviously, affordable housing and working with this community to work with a developer or the, or any other organization that's willing to help us to convert this property into the use of affordable housing.
Very good. Any other discussion? So, all in favor of accepting the property, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Agenda item number 11 is our report. It's the Fuel Surcharge Franchise Report.
Do we have a motion for the, accepting the reports?
With approval.
Motion by Vice Chair Wizenhut. I'll second that. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Agenda item number 12 is an added item. It's a resolution adopting the Forsyth County Board of Commissioners amended meeting schedule for 2025. This is an added item for the Board to decide on the currently approved meeting schedule.
I'll make a couple of introductory comments. Essentially, I think most, most people know that in our, with our bylaws back in December, we actually adopted this particular schedule, and we agreed actually to have, we actually agreed to review it in 90 days. And there were several components in that discussion, and in fact, the motion itself back in December had several, both substitutes and amendments that we worked through, and, we were actually discussing on Monday, kind of an easier way to sort of go through this without probably to avoid having a lot of different, a lot of different substitute motions and pieces of it, because essentially, there's sort of three parts to it. One of those parts, we made a change from meeting every Thursday, kind of having a briefing and then a meeting and then a briefing and then a meeting, to having a Monday, Thursday, skip a week, Monday, Thursday. Same amount of time, same amount of issues, everything the same, it's just the formatting was different. So that particular change was one part of it. A second part, there was some discussion, we have bi-monthly morning briefing discussion sessions. There was some discussion during that time of actually eliminating those, and actually, if we need to, just add them more into our regular briefing sessions and not have that. And the third part was a discussion about, which has been, a lot of what has been discussed tonight, is about having at least one a month or all of our meetings at night instead of one per quarter. So actually, our attorney, Gordon Watkins, actually has sort of prepared three possible motions that could be considered in order to deal with those three separately, and they were actually just available this morning, and I'd like to ask him to just review those three motions, and we could probably march through those, and we would be covering each one separately with the, with kind of the intent of avoiding lots of complicated substitute motions and changes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Chairman, before he starts, I would like to say that before we get the order of A through C, I would want it to be reversed and start with option C first.
And that could clearly be done.
Okay, thank you.
So, so it'll, it'll be up to you as to who makes whatever motion, but as, as the Chairman indicated, there are three primary issues before you today. The first one that I have is regarding the bi-monthly morning discussion session meetings, and that would be either to retain or to cancel those which typically take place at 10:00 a.m., and the remainder of the ones for this year are March 27th, May 8th, July 24th, September 25th, and November 20th. So that's one issue. The second issue, as the Chair indicated, is the Monday, Thursday meeting times, the briefing on Monday, and then three days later, the formal meeting on Thursdays, and that's twice a month, with the exception that there's only one meeting in July. So the decision on that would be rather, would be to keep it as it is now with the Monday, Thursday, or to go back to the every Thursday or something else. And the final one, at least the way I listed them, is to retain the 2:00 p.m. meeting times for the briefings, the Monday briefings and the Thursday meetings, with the exception that currently, there's one meeting a quarter that is at night at 6:00 p.m., or that could be changed if the Board wanted to do something differently. So those are the three motions. The way I have it, there would need to be votes on all three of those, and together they would determine what you're going to do going forward. If, if nothing's passed, we'll just stay the way it is right now.
And Chair, and Chairman, for clarity, if I may, with option C, clarify again that we will be meeting on Mondays at 2:00 p.m., Thursdays at 2:00 p.m., and restore the quarterly meetings for the remainder of 2025.
We'd be keeping the quarterly meetings that are our, we are already scheduled for the quarterly evening meetings.
Not this just one today, but for the remainder of 2025.
Yeah, there'd be three more that would, that would continue.
I wanted to be clear and on record. Thank you.
That's correct.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question for our attorney.
Sure, please.
As I indicated during the briefing on Monday, I did prepare a, a motion of my own on the topic of what you have labeled as Part C. Is there any problem procedurally, if at whatever point we discuss that question, I move, instead of the draft that you have here, move for adding on specific dates, five evening meetings, essentially moving the start time of five already scheduled meetings from 2:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m.?
I will say that over the past week, past few days, I have dug very, very deep into Robert's rules, and those are hours of my life I will never get back. But to answer your question, what you're proposing is fine.
Thank you.
Great. So, and following up on Commissioner McDaniel's request, we certainly can consider the third one, number C, and, and in fact, Commissioner Bessie, if you'd just like, you could use your motion, which is just stated differently.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I move that the 2025 commission meeting schedule is amended to move from 2:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m., the starting time of the following meetings. First, April 24th, second, June 19th, third, August 14th, then October 9th, and finally, November 6th. Not as part of the wording of the motion, but in, in impact, this would leave the three remaining 6:00 p.m. meetings that we already have scheduled in place. This would simply shift the starting time of five more to be, instead of starting at 2:00 o'clock, starting at 6:00 o'clock. If there's a motion, I'll, I'll comment. I mean, if there's a second, I'll comment.
Do we have a second for that motion?
We second.
I'd like to offer an amendment.
We have a second by Commissioner McDaniel and Commissioner Woodbury. Now, we can have discussion, or we can try to, I guess we were trying to avoid having amended motions, and I guess my thought would be is that, is that essentially, if it were the reverse of that, in other words, if you were in favor of leaving it like it was, you'd vote against this motion. If you're in favor of changing it, you would vote for it. But I'm happy to, you are certainly welcome to entertain an amended motion.
I would, I would. We should draw that amendment.
All right, that's good. So, with that said, we're in discussion now. We're ready for discussion.
Okay, thank you, Chairman. Yes, I would like to share a few prepared comments as well for this discussion. First of all, I'd like to share that for seven years, I've advocated for the, at least the quarterly meetings, and I wanted to thank this Board for their consideration and the approval last year to incorporate the quarterly meetings during this year's meeting schedule. Now, my colleagues may speak for themselves if they choose, however, as for me, whatever comes, whatever happens in this vote, I want you to know that I was elected in 2018 and re-elected in 2022 to be available for meetings, Commissioner meetings, that the people entrusted in me. So that meant that I'm going to be here bi-weekly, quarterly, monthly, on those scheduled dates, Tuesday and Thursday at 9:00, at 10:00, at 2:00, and at 6:00. And I understand the outcry of the community as you're, as we, you want to be involved in the engagement in terms of the meetings and discussions. And I will say that our meeting information, as you've already been said and told, they're on the website, they're on social media, and you can call in. This year, we have had listening sessions held by our county leaders and some of us. So we listen, and we're here to currently help, we're currently here to help navigate through this budget season. So I want you to understand that we have 130,000 Medicaid recipients who are possibly about to lose their benefits, and our county support teams are also working hard to help our disadvantage. Our animal welfare and EMS are at hand, and I would love to just get back to the business of helping the people in our county and what of helping the people in our county, and would love the community to help with your hands to help do so as well. So Chairman, thank you, I've concluded my comments and my discussion.
I'll make one comment before we move on, and the comment I'd make was that, that's kind of a good lead-in about, there's some important issues that we are grappling with, and that's, and those are important, and far more important than when we're meeting. And I will say that, having been in public work and public service for many years, and in fact, 33 of those as a superintendent of schools in four districts, I have had a lot of night meetings, a lot of them. And quite frankly, meeting at night or meeting in the day, the issue is, can the public easily be informed, and is there a way to communicate? Now, when I started my work as a superintendent in 1980, I can tell you that there was, there was no internet in 1980, and the only communications that I received occurred by telephone or somebody coming to see me, or at a public meeting during a communication session, you know, to our Board of Education. So, there were limited ways to stay informed, and the newspaper did write a lot. Newspaper is a pretty good information tool at that point, and that was, that was helpful. But at this day and time, we've already heard from one of our speakers tonight, sort of talking, you know, sort of criticizing the issue that streaming is not the same thing as being here. And I can tell you that I've wanted to know information, I know we've had Trevonia Brown-Gather here tonight from the school board, I've been interested in some of the school issues. I've had a career in schoolwork, and a lot of it here, and so I've wanted to listen to some of their, I've not gone to their meetings, not been to a single one. But I have, in fact, listened to several and actually gone and skipped through the things that I believe someone referred to as boring, and I skipped through those and got to the thing that I was interested in, and quite frankly, I used my time, I think wisely, in doing that, and that was helpful. And if I've got an issue, this issue of communicating with the public, I probably had in the last, probably, week, I bet you I've had 150 emails on probably 10 or 12 topics. And in fact, I think every one that was mentioned tonight, I've had eight, an email of one form or another about it. And I do my very best to respond to every single one of those emails, and some of those have prompted good discussions, and get follow-ups, and get good information. And I'm interested in getting good information from the public, and I have received good information from the public. I've had just this week, I've only had two calls, I think, this week about particular issues, and they have been helpful, helpful to talk to folks about and things. In fact, I followed up on one of those calls today about unrelated to these matters, and it was really, I learned something in that part. It was a good, good follow-up. In fact, Chris Murphy's smiling because I called him, asked him, it had nothing to do with any of the things we dealt with tonight. But it was, that was helpful, you know, information. And for zoning and planning kind of issues, we, I've had, there's a neighborhood, there's a zoning coming before us that'll be heard, we, it hasn't even been scheduled. It hasn't even been to us yet. And I've heard probably from nearly every person in that neighborhood, talked to at least 10 of them on the phone, I've probably gotten 30 emails about it. I have promised and will go, because it's, we have still three weeks away, I will go look at what the traffic's like at rush hour in that area, and I will look at the things and have a good handle on that. So I, you know, I feel like that I have learned, I have learned from the public on a regular basis, and quite frankly, whether we're meeting at 2:00 o'clock or 6:00 o'clock, doesn't make any difference to me. But I would much rather go ahead and continue, the majority of this board has been interested in meeting at 2:00 o'clock, and at least I think in our country, majority has been ruling in those decisions, and that's the way it's been. So I'm going to vote against this motion for that reason. Now, other discussion?
Yes. Yes, yes, Chair Martin. I would just like to say that, for the record, I previously proposed that all of our public meetings start at 6:00 o'clock, and I think, I think maybe Commissioner Bessie did indulge me with a second, but I could only get one vote, which was, of course, myself, to try to shift all of our meetings that are public, which doesn't include our briefings, to 6:00 o'clock. So I am very happy to support this concerted effort of several organizations and individual citizens to at least schedule half of our public meetings to 6:00 p.m. I definitely want to thank possibly maybe 100 citizens who have come out to show support of this effort and to participate in your government, our government. I would lastly like to reiterate the four main points that were organized by some of the citizens who expressed that, one, most of our constituents in both districts A and B work during the day, they cannot attend daytime meetings. This prevents them from participating in our hearings and having a public say in our county government. This includes teachers, parents, taxpayers, homeowners, small business owners, and many other working residents. Two, our constituents possess valuable information on many county commissioners' issues such as public education, public safety, public services, taxes, land use, code enforcement, affordable housing, and many others. Third point, the county is an outlier. The Winston-Salem City Council, local school board, and 93% of all North Carolina counties accommodate their working constituents and have regular evening public meetings. And lastly, research from the UNC School of Government shows public participation helps build trust and understanding between residents and their elected county officials. This is especially true because our county is growing diverse urban area, is growing with diverse urban areas with many public policy concerns and a variety of viewpoints. And with that being said, I will pass, I think, over to Commissioner Bessie. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much for recognizing our motion and for, for the support that has been spoken. And I want to say a couple of things about my colleagues on the commission here. One, I want to note that I think that Chairman Martin is probably the best elected official with whom I have served in terms of responding directly to emails and contacts from constituents, and I commend his, his work there. And I would like to say about all of my colleagues, that I believe you are conscientious public servants who do your best to represent the interests of the people of, of your districts or the county as a whole, even when no one is watching. Having said that, I also have previous elected service. I served for 19 years as a member of the Winston-Salem City Council, which always held its formal voting meetings in the evening hour. And I did notice that there was a substantive difference on a regular basis between the discussions that we had during the evening, when people could show up in person and present on their zoning case, or the budget, or another matter of great concern, because that comment helped inform the discussions that we had live. There was an interchange that is not possible when we are only reacting to emails or people who watch online and comment later. And finally, you know, I've, I've heard a number of comments from various colleagues indicating that they did not see a compelling reason to make the change. What I have not heard is any compelling reason not to give it a try. I ask for support of the change. I ask support of the change, and of course, since this is a democracy, I will respect the outcome of the vote.
Any other discussion? All right. So the motion before us is to actually add, to make, essentially to add the additional evening nights, so that we will end up with meeting, our second meeting each month actually would be, Thursday would be at 6:00 p.m. So a vote yes is to support the 6:00 p.m. change, a vote no is to leave it as it is. So, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, please say aye.
Aye.
It appears to be three to three, so the motion fails. We can come back and revisit this motion at another date when we have all seven here. And by the way, Mr. Limble is ill this evening, was unable to be here. So, we're ready for the second motion, which I believe, the order, I think, from our attorney, we changed it with them out of order, but is the motion to deal with the Monday, Thursday meetings, to entertain a moting, motion relative to that. While you're thinking, I'd be happy to make that. I'd be happy to make a motion that we continue our scheduled meeting on Monday briefings and Thursday meetings, skip a week, and repeat. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a second from Vice Chair Wizenhut. Is there any discussion about that, continuing that practice? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
One opposed, motion passes five to one. The last item was a discussion about the bi-monthly morning sessions. So, again, I'd be happy to make the motion that, make the motion that we continue the bi-monthly motions in the morning, and I'd be interested in a second.
Second.
Second from Vice Chair Wizenhut. Is there any discussion, this would be continuing what we have in place with the bi-monthly briefings?
I do have a question in regards to the issue that I think Commissioner McDaniel raised as relates to the technology to come into our briefings to record those sessions. Are we going to move in that direction?
I felt like we made the decision to go ahead and do that, and I actually just ran into our technology person on the way out last Monday, and he indicated not only would that one camera be of advantage for any place in this building, it also would allow us to cover anything outdoors, such as dedications, ribbon cuttings, those kind of events, and it's a fairly modest amount of around $5,000, and I think we, we need to do that and make that easy to do. So, yeah, yes, I think we're good. Got it.
I think that, that is a great suggestion in lieu of, although these are not public per se meetings, there are, they are meetings that the public should attend so that you are being informed as we are by staff, which help us to be able to come and make, you know, more sound votes on the issue. So, we invite you to, if you can, participate in those workshops, because it really is a chance for us to dive deeper into the information that we have to vote on. Thank you.
Very good. So, any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, I have one announcement before adjournment. We do have, we actually do have briefings on our, our upcoming planning and zoning issues, and we always hear from Chris Murphy about those. This is a first of two prior to our meeting, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna let him just go ahead and do that, and then we'll adjourn.
Unfortunately, this isn't as exciting as everything else that you've had tonight. I don't want to mess up this mic, so. I'm going to try to be really brief. We do have two text amendments, and I will brief both of those. UDO CC 28 is a text amendment where planning staff look to make an amendment to Chapter 4 of the UDO to deal with single-family lots within multifamily zoning districts, and analyzing that, we found that there were some inconsistent lot sizes. Our, the most intense zoning district for multifamily, RM 18, actually had a larger single-family lot size than did some of the less intense multifamily districts like RM 8 and RM 12. So we tried to streamline that, and the way we did that was to add a footnote in each of the residential multifamily tables, referencing back to another table that basically said for all cases when you have a single family, when you're doing a single-family residential house in RM zoning, 5,000 square foot minimum lot size. And that's consistent with some of the existing conditions in there, but we wanted to make that uniform. Again, this is just an example of making sure that we did that across the board. This amendment rectifies discrepancies and improves the logical clarity throughout multiple UDO sections. This change does remove barriers, which will improve hopefully some infill opportunities by removing the need to rezone from RM to RS to get these smaller lot sizes. This text amendment does not constitute a downzoning per the regulations of Senate Bill 382. That's something new that we're going to add until and unless that gets repealed. So we did discuss that with the county attorney's office. This was heard by the planning board after October 20, October 10th, 2024 public hearing. There were no speakers in opposition, and the planning board did vote unanimously to recommend or approval of this to both the city council and the county commissioners, and it was adopted by the city back in January. So with that, I'm glad to answer any questions. I know that was real brief. I'll go into a little more detail when we brief this two Mondays, I guess now based on the decision just made. So if there aren't any questions, I will jump real quickly over to UDO CC 29, which is hopefully even simpler. This is a text amendment also proposed by Planning and Development Services staff, and this is to amend multiple chapters to align language for our Historic Resources Commission with the North Carolina General Statute. If you recall, several years ago, the North Carolina General Statutes revised the statutes and created 160D, which put all of the development regulations in one place. There was a second component of that was, which was adopted in 2022, which dealt with some of the Historic Resource Commission language and local historic landmarks, H, H districts, H.O. districts. What this text amendment does is basically takes that language, makes our language consistent with the state statute regulations and language, it basically corrects some other errors and things that we found in the ordinances. It does mirror the general statutes, it did again create oversight, correct oversights, outdated titles, typographical errors, and it did regularize, regularize and define certain terms. It doesn't change the current operations of the HRC. Again, this text amendment does not constitute a downzoning per the regulations of Senate Bill 382. Similarly to the previous text amendment, this was heard by the planning board in November of 2024. Again, there were no speakers in opposition. They did recommend approval of this to both the county commissioners and the city council, and again, the city council did adopt this in January of this year. So with that, I'm glad to answer any questions, and again, if there are questions, if you think of anything, reach out to me, or I will be here in two Mondays for a formal briefing.
Any questions for Chris about the two text amendments? All right. Stand adjourned.